The Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting, May 16th, 2023. And I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves on the dais.
Kristy Rachel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summeral-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. All right, we're going to get going with the agenda. First up is an update on our elderly services program. And welcome back Suzanne Burke, who is CEO of Council on Aging. Welcome back.
Good afternoon. First, I would like to take a moment and introduce a new member of our executive team to the commission. Ronnie Spears is our new Chief Financial Officer. And Ronnie joined COA in October with a long history of service in the home care industry. So we're very excited that he's with us today and wanted you to get the opportunity to meet Ronnie.
All right, welcome. Nice to meet you.
And then Ken is also with us, and Ken and I are going to split presentations. So I'd like to begin by going over an update on the Hamilton County Senior Utility and Home Repair Assistance Program. So just as a reminder, the program began in April of 2022 with $1 million funded through the senior service levy. Eligibility wise, you had to be over age of 60, be an older adult or family member in the household currently paying the utility bill, be ineligible for other assistance programs, and then have an income of 300% of poverty level or below. But there was no requirement for what we call impairment levels for activities of daily living or anything. That program was extremely successful, as you will recall in our last update. And we had to put a waiting list in place in July. And there were about over 1,700 individuals placed on the waiting list. Who we served, just to give you, I probably should be moving this forward, shouldn't I? I joined the wrong button.
You want to go to the next one?
Sure.
You may go.
Okay. So in terms of who was served, we had a utility credit that was either through Duke Energy or Greater Cincinnati Water Works. We developed processes with those partners to streamline so credits could be applied quickly. And we had over 1,194 individuals receive a credit. 1,072 were for Duke for $316,000 and 112 for Water Works for 61 for the utility program cost of $377,000. That's just the breakdown in the graph. Next slide. In home modifications and repairs, we completed 309 modifications and repairs. We utilized our existing provider network first to obtain the quotes and proposals. But we also had to utilize out of network providers if we were unable to find someone to serve in a timely fashion. Quotes above $1,500 required manager approval. And the most common home modifications were stair lifts, ramps, grab bars, and other accessibility features, HVAC repair and replacement, and general plumbing repairs. That program, we expended $1,036,926. Next slide. This graph just shows the number of the types of repairs. So you see at the bottom of the pyramid, 65 plumbing repairs, 47 general electric work, carpentry work, 58, and so on. Next slide. The cost of the average cost of repairs was $3,356. And the average cost by type of repair varied. So your more expensive repairs, of course, are your walk-in shower, which ranged from $8,500 to $14,000. Window replacement, AC and HVAC replacement, and then stair lifts. Next slide. Go ahead and jump to the next one. We'll just cover the demographics. So the gender, 77% of the total program recipients were female and 23% male. And the age range, 60 to 70, 55% were in that range, with 71 to 80 being the next highest category at 32%. Around 59% of the recipients were African American, 21% Caucasian, and 20% who declined to answer. The next slide is zip code, served by zip code. Just tells you the most prominent zip codes where the repairs or assistance was provided. And then we have like just kind of a heat map showing that geographically across the county as well. So I want to bring you to where we are today, 2023. Those were the highlights from 2022, but we began 2023 with a million dollar budget, again funded through the senior services tax levy. But as I mentioned in the 2022 numbers, we had to start a waiting list. So the first goal with those new funds was to process the individuals on the waiting list. So there were 1,731 individuals on the waiting list. When we spoke to you the last time, I think we told you we were anticipating getting additional Duke utility funds that we would be hopefully utilizing to address those on the waiting list. That in fact did occur. We had 877 on the waiting list who received a Duke energy credit from a different, which non-county revenue source that Duke had retained us to assist them with. 338 received a Duke credit from the Hamilton County program from your revenue source for a total of $97,400. 37 received a Water Works credit. 56 clients have home modifications in process at an estimated cost of $243,177. And then we have 125 clients in the eligibility process or the estimating process right now. We're anticipating those expenditures to be $542,000. And our average repair cost has increased to $4,342. We have roughly 300 individuals who we have been unable to contact after multiple efforts. And we have referred those individuals to SOACT for additional effort and follow-up and hoping that we can identify those individuals. So we have essentially at this point, less than $100,000 remaining. We continue to receive new referrals. And the types of services include the same HVAC and window replacements, walk-in showers, and electrical work. We have not been promoting or marketing the program since the waiting list started in July because we didn't want to generate additional people on the waiting list if we weren't going to be able to satisfy them. So we are processing all of those individuals now. And everyone that should have been on the waiting list should have been served through this funding. So if you would like to go, we just have another couple of slides on this. Yeah, so this, just our couple, long-term savings, cost and impact, and some individual success stories. So Tim needed a new water heater and his bill was running $130 a month and is now 90. So he's through this improvement, seen a 31% reduction in his bill. And then some other success stories there. So I want to kind of close with upcoming funding potential. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ken to talk about financial circumstances with the levy in general. But included in the governor's budget is a new item called Healthy Aging Grants. It has been, it was part of the, it's made it through the House, so it's still in. It's $40 million that's going to be made available to the 88 counties to assist seniors with remaining in their homes. And the purposes are going to be very similar to what the programs that we have in the levy are. So home repairs, home modifications, home care assistance, services designed to prevent people from having to move to a skilled nursing facility. So Hamilton County, if this survives the budget process, their share is estimated to be $2.4 million. And those funds will come directly to the Board of County Commissioners. So our recommendation would be to utilize those funds because we believe the parameters are going to include home mods and home repairs to be able to continue this program or to be able to continue to fund services in the levy where we're experiencing some issues due to inflation growth. And Ken's going to review those with you. So, questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to step back and talk about quickly this board how we got here to this. We had a lot of seniors who had come out during the COVID time and needed help because their bills are going up. And the Duke bill obviously going up, water bill going up. But their social security checks weren't going up. And even now, when they go up, it's inflation. And so we had a lot of people that had to be turned away at the 513 relief bus. They, many had stood in line with pain and walker. They did have options to go online, but they preferred to be there. They had options to call 211, but they wanted to talk to someone in person. And what they found, what we found out, and I'm glad they did, because we also found out that because of the federal guidelines of them having a social security check, they were not eligible for assistance. And so we said, wait a minute, we got to do something for the senior citizens. And I want to thank my colleagues because I said, well, what about $1 million to try to get us started? I didn't know how much it was going to take. And so many seniors have stopped, many of us, I know they've stopped me, saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. And so I said, well, a lot of times we pass levies, which is very important. People said, now, what happens after the levies pass? How do I get in touch with someone? Even though Council on Aging, you have done an excellent job on reaching a lot of seniors, but we got a lot more that may not be aware of all the services that are out there. And so I thought we tried to work on getting a, because I would love to have a office with you, with seniors, where we just deal with the seniors. Here's a one number, and you've been able to track it and come back. So the question is, did the million dollars that we put forward help people? And we talked about over 1,000 plus people who were helped at a time when it was really critical. So I would like to see this going. I always talk about two groups of people. Children and senior citizens. If you want to get me upset, mess with my senior citizens or the babies. Because we all going to be seniors one day, and I don't want, I would hope that I have a board that will be sitting up here who will care something about me as a senior citizen at some point. So I would love to, I know, I want to keep our eye on what the state is doing and ask that administrator to report to us if there's opportunity with the 2.4 million, but also have a contingency because there are so many seniors that just, you know, they want to be independent. And they should be able to be independent. Just at the BMV, a senior citizen said, she had a relative, her child died, who usually takes her to the BMV. So she comes down, she hadn't been in years, they always take me. She didn't even know, you know, you hit this button. She said, no, I'm standing in line, I'm right behind you. And I'm like, no, here, let me show you how to do the screen. So we want to make sure that that is, that is happening. So I want to thank you, you've done a great job on this program and many other programs. And I want to keep this going. And it seems that the relationship and partnership that you had with SOACT worked out really well. And I'm hoping that that can continue to, because they have a unique niche of people that they can reach that have trust issues and those kind of things. So just wanted to highlight that. I will open it up to Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. So I was going to ask, I too will be interested to hear what happens with the state dollars. And the 2.4, is that evenly distributed or rather by population throughout the state? So it's not a grant program?
It's a formula.
Okay.
Yes, so Hamilton County is getting a very large share, right, because of its size, yes.
Very good. And then also ask the administrator, we talked earlier in our previous meeting today about different pots of money for home repair. Because we also do home repair with our CDBG dollars. And so I just, there's the senior pot, which is the one we're talking about. There's also another set of resources for individuals who need to do home repairs that we also have through the CDBG. Can you just talk about that for a second, just to kind of round out this conversation about home modifications?
Yeah, so obviously we have the Senior Home Modification Program, which has been one of our most central programs recently. We also have, through our Community Development Office, we have a program that is specifically related to heating and air conditioning, heating and cooling. So we used to do a broader home repair package through community development. In the past, when we stopped that, we wanted to make sure that we at least continued to provide the critical heating and cooling before the winter and the summer. So we continue to do contracts. And I believe we are just in the process of entering into the contracts for the summer with contractors. And then obviously, we have the home repair program that the Board had approved through our ARPA grants as well. Those are currently undergoing legal review, and we hope to get those before the Board sometime this summer. So we've got a couple of different things that we're doing in this realm, all with the goal of helping to keep homes repaired, keep people in their homes, and especially keep seniors in their homes.
Okay, yeah, because we, as has been mentioned, we've been doing this kind of on a number of different fronts. But this one was targeted to seniors. So, no, I appreciate the presentation. I'm glad that it was highly utilized, and I'll look forward to hearing.
Successful, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for that question. Just as it's confusing, we want to make sure it's not confusing for the people. Because if it's CDBG, I don't know if there's certain parameters or what have you. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Ludo, you could maybe provide for the Board. Like, what are, are there parameters? Is it one number? How do we do that?
Yeah, so we can, we can get you a, we can lump this all into one and get it back to the Board. He's telling you, here's all the different parameters for each of the programs, who is eligible, that type of thing.
Sounds good.
We did a community needs assessment when we were doing our strategic planning process. And home repairs was one of the top items just from the community at large where they feel they need assistance. So it's really a popular program and would continue to be so as we continue to try to fund it.
Thank you. And it falls under affordable housing, because if you can't afford to keep up, they will hit you with all kinds of fines and bills and throw you out. So it also falls under that. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Suzanne, thank you so much for not only your presentation, but just all that your agency does. You've always done great work. And being in this seat has allowed me to see it even closer. You were fantastic during the pandemic when other people were not doing as much. You never stopped. And I think about the unique meals that you did for the seniors and all of that. So I want to thank you and your staff for all of that. I heard you say earlier, the Healthy Aging Grant for 40 million will get 2.4. And that's great, we can use it. I'm just surprised that the governor did not allocate more. Was there more suggested? And then through the lobbying, they reduced the amount? How did, how did that work?
So, no. And these are actually ARPA funds that the State Aging Department is proposing to distribute. But we're kind of, aging is a unique infrastructure. So as you, you know, former state officials know, there are 12 area agencies on aging, and most of the federal and state money flows through us. But they wanted to take this opportunity with some of the one-time ARPA funds to make it available to the counties or, you know, whatever unique circumstances the counties might like to pursue. So that is the source of the fund. So it is one-time funding that has an expiration period.
Right. And I'm aware that it's ARPA funding. I'm thinking as our seniors increase, the number of seniors. So we're going to take it and use it productively. But maybe they'll think a little bit later about, because I know we have to have all our ARPA money spent by '26.
Yes.
So I'm glad that we're getting it, and we certainly can use it. We also have to be realistic that we can't impact all seniors. We can do the best we can, and your numbers were great. But we'll continue to impact as many as we can. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the support. And I'm going to do good news, bad news, and turn it over to Ken for a little minute to talk about the current state of the levy and some of the financial implications from inflation that we're seeing on the levy program.
Will you keep us posted on state, we haven't, they haven't, the budget's not over, so we hope it stays.
Right, yes, I will keep Jeff posted. And again, yes, we're very excited about that because you're going to see some of the constraints that we have. And just how quickly we spent these funds shows the community need is real. And if we were marketing again, it would be right back there with a huge waiting list. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, and good to be with all of you. I'm here to provide an update and another presentation for the senior services levy. And, okay, thank you. So as you know, Council on Aging, we provide three programs on your behalf through the senior services levy. One is the elderly services program, which is the traditional program that we've managed in Hamilton County since 1993. This program is designed to keep older adults living at home in their community and out of a nursing home as long as possible. The requirements to be eligible are a Hamilton County resident over the age of 60. They have to have several deficits, functional deficits that threaten their ability to stay independent at home. These are things that we all take for granted, such as being able to bathe yourself, get yourself dressed, go to the grocery store and so forth. A full array of services are provided through this program through a contracted provider network that we contract with. The average length of stay on this program is two and a half years. And the total cost for an individual that we enroll that stays for that average of two and a half years is $11,800 over their tenure on the program. We also have Fast Track Home, which was a program that we introduced in Hamilton County about six or seven years ago. This is a short-term program, up to 60 days for individuals who are transitioning out of the hospital or a skilled nursing facility. And it provides the services that people need at the most vulnerable, a very vulnerable point in time for them. For any of you who know an individual who's left a nursing facility or a hospital, it's a very chaotic and overwhelming time. So we step in for a short period of time to provide transitional care services as well as set up while they're still in the hospital, services that they need. The length of stay is two months, and the average cost is $1,600. And Suzanne already reviewed the Home Modification Utility Program. If we go to the next slide, just as a reminder, we contract with an extensive network of providers to deliver services. So at Council on Aging, we don't, we contract with organizations to deliver the meals, to provide the transportation, and to go into the home to provide the homemaking and personal care services that people need. So the majority of the funding through the senior services levies goes out to these organizations. And there's a list of the contracted providers on the next, the next couple of slides. So there's two pathways to enroll into the elderly services program or into the senior services levy program. One is through our Aging and Disability Resource Network. So as the area agency on aging, we're designated by the state of Ohio, and it's a federal designation as a single point of entry for older adults and families to call in and receive information and connection to resources that they need in the community. And last year, we responded to nearly 58,000 requests from the community. And we, we also have a, an online, an online database resource available for older adults. And we're seeing more and more usage of our, our online resources and tools. If we go to the next slide, this is a, kind of a visual of our front door where we take these 58,000 inquiries. And we have, the services on the right are services that are provided directly through Council on Aging or through some of our subcontracted providers. And on the left are resources that we, in the community, available throughout Hamilton County where we assist older adults in getting connected to the services that they may need. So accessing our, our front door, the next slide, we have a phone number. We also have a website. And we're actually in the process of reformatting our website to make it more friendly for older adults and family caregivers. We, we hosted a number of feedback sessions over, over the winter with older adults getting feedback about what they wanted because there's a growing need to, instead of making a phone call into our resource center, to get resources directly through our website. If we go to the next slide, Fast Track Home is the second pathway. So with this pathway, we have staff that work directly with discharge planners at the hospitals in Hamilton County and also in regions outside of Hamilton County, as well as skilled nursing facilities. So we, we go right to where the patient is, and we do bedside assessments and set up services so that they are discharged and go home with the services that they, they need. This is a very innovative program and is, is unique to Hamilton County, unique to our region, and is not something you see in other areas of the country. The next four slides show the collaborating organizations that we work with through Fast Track Home. And it's a long list, but these are organizations and agencies that we work with on a daily basis for identifying patients for older adults in Hamilton County that need services through Fast Track Home. So we receive referrals from these organizations. And we also work with, with them on, on transitioning older adults out of their, out of their various facilities. Next, I want to review significant trends that are currently impacting the senior services levy. And I'll provide some, some detailed background on this. But the major trends including, include a surging demand for community services, staffing shortages that are impacting both Council on Aging and our contracted provider network's ability to deliver the services to the demand. Also innovative changes that we're making to our programming to adapt to the changing needs of older adults. And also the impact of inflation that we're seeing on the cost of services. And then finally, decreasing pandemic federal relief funding that we're going to be seeing over the next year and what that impact is going to be. So next slide is the surging demand. And at the end of March of this year, we had already reached the projected market penetration and demand that we were expecting at the, at the end of December of 2023. We have been seeing record demand for services in the home. And in fact, earlier this spring, we were taking 100 enrollments, over 100 enrollments every week into the program. I've been doing this a long time. We've never seen the, the kind of demand that we're seeing. And you can see, we've, we've seen growing demand for the program over time with, by the market penetration chart on the left and enrollment into Fast Track Home and ESP services on the right. And there's a lot of different factors for that. Coming out of the pandemic, we're seeing nursing home usage on the decline. And families, more and more families are doing whatever they can to avoid nursing facilities even more than they, they used to prior, which we know is, is a factor of staffing shortages in the, in the nursing facilities as well as some bad experiences during the pandemic of being able to routinely visit their loved ones in the facility. And there are a lot of facilities who are now turning beds back to the state, closing down wings of their, of their facilities. And in a few cases, they've shut down and closed some nursing facilities. If we go to the next slide, for our home care staffing shortages, homemaking and personal care are, is a big, a big service within our program and represents about 31% of our levy expenditures. And our home care provider network has been experiencing capacity shortages because they can't retain their staff. And as you can see, this is the percentage of the, the clients enrolled on the program that are receiving their, their home care services from a home care agency declined from 50% prior to the pandemic. And we've kind of bottomed out around 33% as of late. Now, the last two months, we are seeing some indications that we may be bottoming, bottoming out and that the home care staffing shortages may be, may be easing. And if we go to the next slide, there are currently 694 older adults waiting for a home care. care provider in Hamilton County. And the, the staffing shortage that we're seeing occurred in the last five-year levy cycle, which resulted in $7.8 million in savings over the last five-year levy cycle. Well, the, the improvements that we're seeing, if those continue and sustain, and we see a 5% improvement in staffing capacity later this year, that would result in $5 million in additional home care expenditures over the five-year levy cycle. If we go to the next slide, another option at, at Council on Aging that we've been providing is consumer-directed care, which is instead of providing home care services through a traditional home care agency, you go out and hire your own, own care worker. And we've, this, this is an option that's been around for a while, but we've made some efficiency, efficiencies to the process of enrolling into this option. And it's helped to close some of the gap for individuals who can go out and hire their own, own home care worker. We've also innovate, introduced a new innovative tool to help recruit and match people that need home care services with a home care worker. And this has result, resulted in an increase of $800,000 annually because of the almost 50% increase in utilization of the service to meet the, the needs for people that need home care services. We go to the next slide, another option, innovative option that we've recently introduced was a laundry delivery service. So some individuals need help and assistance with doing their laundry. And traditionally, this is done by an aide in the home. And we began this, this past fall as a pilot, which was very successful and is rapidly growing, where we have contracted with companies that will pick the laundry up at their doorstep, launder it, fold it, and deliver it back within 24 hours. And this eliminates the need to use a home care worker to provide the service and do it in a more efficient, an efficient way. And if you think about it, you know, we're using professional equipment with this too. And it's done centrally. So there's a lot of economies of scale and efficiencies built into the process. And we've seen rapid growth in the demand for the service, which is also helping to alleviate the home care staffing shortages. And so far, because of the growth in the service, it's added additional cost of about $100,000 annually. Next slide, Adult Day Services. As you know, this is an option that's really important to family caregivers that need a, a break or respite from their caregiving needs, oftentimes for an older adult that may have dementia and requires 24-hour supervision. Adult Day Centers throughout the state were shut down for a period of time during the pandemic. And when they reopened, there, many of the staff had left and moved on to other work. And some of the centers that were able to reopen but have not returned to a normal level of operating. And there are several facilities throughout the region, this is a national issue, not just one locally, that have not been able to reopen. So as a result of that disruption, we have introduced a new service called Overnight Respite Service on the next slide. And this has been a wildly popular service where instead of receiving, you know, respite for the caregiver through an Adult Day Center, they can receive service through a, a respite provider, which is usually an assisted living or a nursing facility that has some available beds. And they provide anywhere between one and seven days of respite care so that the family can go out of town or get caught up and get, have some relief from their caregiving duties. This is a relatively small program, but, but one that is growing. And the, the cost to that is about $60,000 annually. So we go to the next slide, I want to talk about inflation. Inflation has had its largest impact on the home-deliver meal, also known as the Meals on Wheels program. As you know, the cost of food has gone up, the cost of fuel has gone up, and the cost of labor or employment has also gone up. And those, all three of those are elements within the Home Deliver Meal Program. And we, we've seen a 39% increase in the home deliver meal rate, which has resulted in a $2 million a year increase in the cost of the service over what was originally anticipated when we were seeing more normal 1.5% inflationary increases in the service previously. We do have a, currently, a request for proposal out right now that includes the service. So we're anxious to see how those new rates come in. But this service, along with the home care service that I talked about previously, have the two biggest impacts from a financial standpoint on the Senior Services Levy. Next slide, Transportation. We've seen a big improvement in the quality of transportation in Hamilton County as we've added new, new vendors and a new coordination procedure with our transportation service. But we're also seeing growth in the cost of the service with the, the rise of inflation and labor. And this service has increased by 41%, which has added $670,000 annually to the budget. Although transportation's not a big part of our budget, it still represents about 5% of the, the cost to the Senior Services Levy. And then lastly, the loss of one-time pandemic funding. So as you, as you can see, between 2019 and our projection into 2025, we saw a pretty significant increase in a variety of funding that was coming to the community through, through sources through the state. And we were able to utilize this to serve, provide more services to more older adults. And we're projecting that all the ARPA money, which is the last of the pandemic relief money available, will be depleted by the end of 2024. And this represents a 93% drop in the, the federal and state funding that's available for, to offset Senior Service Levy costs for this program. So next slide, I talked earlier about the two pathways for enrollment into the program. One was through Fast Track Home and the other through, through the community. And with the Fast Track Home process, about 40% of those individuals who are leaving a hospital or nursing home need services beyond the 60 days, which means 60% of them only need short-term care while they're recovering from their hospital stay. And that's what makes this program, the ability to serve a lot, reach a lot more seniors possible because of that, that short length of stay. However, we do have 40% of them that enroll into ESP for Ongoing Services, which results in about 33 enrollments a month. And back in 2022, we were seeing 160 enrollments per month through our Aging and Disability Resource Center. So if we go to the next slide, changes that we started at the first of this month on May 1st with the goal of maximizing the number of older adults served with the greatest needs within the available tax dollars that are available and within our, our, our five-year levy plan. We're continuing enrollments without disruption through hospitals and nursing homes, nursing facilities through the Fast Track Home program. We're limiting the enrollments from the community through the portal for those who are calling in for services unless they have urgent needs such as dialysis patients, cancer patients, individuals on hospice, or if they're in, connected with Adult Protective Services or in need of emergency home deliver meals. For those individuals who we cannot enroll into the program, we're helping them, we're assisting them with connecting them with other resources in the community, including linking them with other benefits. So in some cases, if they're enrolled in a Medicare Advantage Plan, for example, we connect them with benefits that they may be eligible for, for an electronic monitoring system or home deliver meals. So we're slowing enrollment down into the program, but we're not building a waiting list for the program. So the chart below kind of outlines the, the eligibility for the Elderly Services Program prior to May 1st, and then the current eligibility after May 1st, which is the same except we're, we're limiting it based on their need to transition from a hospital or have an urgent or emergency need for the services that are being, that are being provided. So if we go to the next slide, there's an overview of what these enrollment changes look like. So the ESP program is not available for all individuals who are calling in that need assistance. So for example, there are individuals calling in who need transportation to medical appointments or home deliver meals or to clean their house. And unless there's an emergent need or they're being discharged from a facility, we're not enrolling them into the program. And this has resulted in approximately an 80% decrease in new enrollments into the program so far during May. And as I said, we're assisting the, we're assisting everyone who calls in to connect them with the services that, that they need through a Medicare Advantage Plan to the best of our ability. And we're using this time with our contracted provider network to catch up on staffing and to clear the, the backlog of cases, the people, individuals that have been waiting for home care and waiting for a provider that can staff their, their case. So if we go to the next slide, this is an overview of the same enrollment process as of May 1st. And I circled the, there's roughly 30 enrollments per month coming in through our Aging and Disability Resource Center, which is 80% drop from what it was, was previously. And finally, if we go to the last slide, in summary, we're going to continue to be a good steward of available, available tax dollars to serve as many older adults as possible while managing within the constraints of the resources that are available to us in the five-year levy plan. And as I've outlined today, there's a lot of factors involved in this program, and we're going to monitor them continuously and make changes to the program as we learn more about, for example, other new revenue sources. Or, you know, if, for example, if the home deliver meal rates come in lower than we're anticipating, that's going to free up more resources to serve even more people in the community.
Thank you, thank you very much for this presentation. I just have one, and I'll open up to the, the commissioners for it, because we got your presentation late last night, it's pretty sick. I thought we had one presentation, we have two, and we have others that we got to get to. But I wanted to say that my one thing I would say if I had a disappointment was that as the TLRC, not in terms of the board, but what was presented to us, it's kind of hard to go to the, to the taxpayers. And then after we pass a levy, we come back talking about what we can't do. We knew going in, we only had, ARPA was going to be one time. And that's what I kind of think about. Of course, I'm not big on raising taxes, but I think we need to look at all these tax levies cohesively because we got to advertise the right thing. And we're saying, we had the people go and they voted and seniors voted, different people voted, and they're expecting some services. But now we come right behind it and say, well, let me give you the bad news. We knew ARPA was a one time. We knew 93% would go down from the ARPA money. We knew that before we had a levy. And so I'm kind of the type of person that I don't really like to do these levies and then everybody come after the levy and say what they can't do. So it kind of makes it a little distant. This is what I'm hearing from a lot of people. We vote for levies, but then what happens after the levy? They don't hear anything. Of course, you got different people that got contracts and those kind of things. But that's the kind of stuff, not just with this, but other levies that's coming forward. And I just want to put that on the table. That's where we are. Because maybe we could have looked at, we went up on mental health and there were different levels of how we could have went up. And if we knew seniors was, you saying, you know, 93%, well, we knew ARPA was a one time. That's all we keep screaming on this board, it's a one time. But the senior citizens could not just get, getting dropped. I mean, they're just getting dropped out here and because it's a growing number. And I'm not saying we can help every senior, but at the same time, when you come back and say, well, 93% we won't be able to do because it was ARPA money, I think I would have been better for me. I'm going to speak for me and I'm going to speak for the seniors that I, I've talked to. They would, you know, and it's not just this levy, it's a lot of them. They come on, they get these levies and go, go, go. And then less than 60 days and 90 days, we're talking about what we can't do. And that kind of, kind of takes the wind out of a lot of people. So we understood that ARPA was a one time. You knew it was a one time. We know it's a one time. And I just wanted to just make sure that the basics can get covered for senior citizens. And it's a growing population.
And just, just to be clear, ARPA is one time, but I think that's the smallest factor that's involved in this. It's all the other factors of the, their growing demand. And, you know, fewer people being in nursing facilities. We're serving a record number of older adults in Hamilton County right now. We've never before had the enrollment levels that we have today. And it's the, you know, the inflation and the changing service demands are, are having the largest impact on the, the spending. And we have to live within, you know, the available revenue that we have.
No, I get that part. But what I'm saying is we hire these consultants to come in, it's supposed to be economic experts. We put them through the TLRC, they're supposed to be experts, they come with a, we knew in some form of inflation was coming, not maybe as high as this. But we also know that the, the governor, not just this governor, governors before, I mean, everybody's trying to get people out of these nursing homes and staying in their homes. It's been a, it's been a goal, it's been a campaign, it's for, for not just this time, it goes back when I was at the State House. So I'm just saying, when we put stuff on, I just want to be honest with the people. And then here we are right back, you know, not too many months later, here we come, you say, oh, here he comes with the bad news. Well, I just voted. If I'm a voter, I just voted. Why am I not getting anything? That's exactly what they're going to, to be thinking. But I don't want to take up the whole day because we had, I knew you were going to come with this, we would have had another whole day to, to deal with it. But that's the frustration. I know you got frustrations, but I'm just saying, well, we hired these experts and all that, give me the whole picture. And then if we decide we didn't go a certain way, I know we can't help everybody, but I want to know the whole picture. And it's not necessarily you all, but whoever this, these consultants and economists that we've been hiring to look at these levies.
So I think also one of the challenges, Commissioner, at the time the Tax Levy Review Committee occurred and the review was done, is we had accrued a significant fund balance because of some of the issues with the home care program not having workforce and we were underspending. So at that point in time, they were kind of challenging us with, do you even need the levy at the size that it is? And we said, we do, because not only is, did the levy balance accrue because of the workforce shortage, but we also did a really good job of making sure that all federal and state funds that came in were used before the local funds, which we're charged to do. So there was a challenge to us during that process, and we cautioned them at that point in time. And we said, look, you know, this workforce, we are taking steps to be innovative and to try to get people the services. And if that happens, the spending is going to go back up, which it has. So that coupled with then people not wanting to go in the nursing facility anymore and coming into the program, and then the unprecedented inflation that we've seen in our, in our cost driver line items, which are meals and home care, is kind of created that perfect storm. So, you know, who knew this inflation would continue at this rate and that for this length? And we had kind of raised that at that point in time. You know, if this continues, we will have challenges. So that was all raised with the committee. I think Lisa and Jeff will attest to that at the time. But, you know, they were looking at a big fund balance and saying, well, you, you don't need this, people aren't using the services. And that is not exactly where we are. So I wanted to add that.
Yeah, thanks for standing up, Vice President Drew House.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. So I can see that you are implementing programs to reduce costs. It seems to me, and you talked about the directed care where people choose their own caregiver, you talked about the laundry services and the overnight respite service. Is it true that as you reduce costs here, because of the model that you're creating, there's more usage or more demand for the model? And so it's, it's a reduction in per person, but it's not a reduction because the population using that service grows? Is that accurate?
So you're right. These, these innovative services that we're introducing are less expensive in a more efficient way of. of providing the services, and the demand for those services continues to grow. So, we have to, we have to look at these innovative service designs so that we can serve that growing demand and that growing population.
Yeah, and I applaud you for finding cheaper ways to deliver the service and maybe more efficient and maybe services that people prefer to the more traditional, like the laundry thing comes to mind, right? People might prefer to send out the laundry instead of having somebody in-house doing it. So, I just, yeah, I just wanted to get some clarity on kind of the numbers there. So, we, I go back in time, we did increase this levy back in, what was it, 18 or so?
Seventeen?
Yeah. Yeah, so, and it's always this balancing act of, we've got seven levies that we control, we've increased seniors, we've increased children's, and we've increased mental health of the seven. So, three of the seven, since I've been here, and I don't think they had much, I know they didn't have much of an increase before I got here on any of the seven. So, we are trying to keep up with the need, but, you know, the TLRC is weighing all these different factors, as is this board, as we try to figure out what's the best approach to the levies and to putting something on the ballot. And I do remember the reserve coming into play here and saying, well, there's a good size reserve in addition to some of the money that we're getting through ARPA and the state, maybe that can stave off any kind of increase that we need to do for the next five years. So, that, was that levy, I'm trying to remember the timing, that was last year?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so we've, and then it's a five-year cycle, so we'll, do you all have a mid-levy or mid-cycle review coming up? Okay, so that's another opportunity to take a look at rightsizing if need be for the levy. But it is difficult to manage all of these things in the context of the great need in the county on all fronts. One other question I have for you, so Suzanne, we used to always talk about the waiting list when I was a state rep. And we've had these conversations about how people want to age in place, that is optimal, and that's what people want. And so, back in, back then, we always talked about this waiting list and trying to have enough resources to get everybody in the program. What I hear you saying now, correct me if I'm wrong, is there's no waiting list, but you've changed the, is it the eligibility or the folks that you are allowing to come in so that while there's no waiting list, it's because you're not putting people on a waiting list?
That's correct. Right. And that's in part to kind of set realistic community expectations, because a waiting list is very difficult for individuals sitting on the waiting list, waiting. Not, no, and they could be on there in the past, they've been on there for a year, waiting for services. So, looking at the eligibility criteria to just say, we're going to refer out and help them find other resources available to them if possible and deal with the most critical individuals either in nursing homes or hospitals right now coming out, or as Ken said, on dialysis and presenting with an urgent need, enrolling those individuals.
Do you have any sense of how many people we're talking about that would have gone onto a waiting list?
I mean, in terms of how many people will not be enrolled?
Yes.
So, it's an 80%, it's roughly an 80% reduction for those who are calling in from the community?
But how many people is that? What does 80% represent?
It represents...
I think it's helpful for us to understand how many individuals are impacted by that number.
Well, it's 80% of 160 per month. So, that would be about 90 people a month that were not enrolled in the program.
Okay. Okay. It's challenging.
I wanted to make one comment to your earlier comment, Commissioner, about kind of the tax levy and the spending that you can't have it on the slide, but it's important to remember, you know, we've been working on innovation solution, innovative solutions because people have been going without, because there are no workers, for example. There's that 600-ish people who are just, there's no one to meet their needs. So, that's how we're trying to compartmentalize, like break out laundry so that need can be met because of the lack of workforce available to provide these services, which we've been doing a ton to try to correct, but that's a long-term, you know, trying to bring people into the industry, an industry that is challenging and an industry that many people have left.
Can I ask one more question just to follow? So, you talked about that workforce challenge, right? Because people had, especially during COVID, had left the field. So, have they come back, or you've just changed the model to address the need in a different way?
So, we've changed the model to address the needs in different ways. So, for example, when Ken referenced the laundry delivery service, so an aide might have come in and helped with bathing, some meal prep and laundry, maybe now they're just coming in for the piece that we can't fill with another intervention such as the bathing. So, yes, you know, I would not say they've come back. Now, we are doing a recruitment campaign to, through our Ad and Aid app, to bring newcomers to the field, you know, where you can be, you'll see it kind of on sponsored Facebook and different ads where maybe you're willing to go grocery shop for a senior and just do that piece. That would be great, too. And we're trying to build that network of people who might not have done it before and who say, I could do that for a senior in grocery shop and maybe don't feel comfortable giving a bath, but they could do that piece. So, that's kind of our strategy, and we are attracting new people for that.
Yeah, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. Since we passed the last levy, we know the landscape has changed dramatically, so we have to change with it. And I can see as we look at inflation and cost of food and things like that have gone up. I was, I have a couple of comments. You know, this is a special population, you know, the seniors, we have to make sure they have the basic needs, food, shelter. Transportation has been a big issue with Suzanne and I personally had some issues with that, and she was able to resolve that. But transportation is so important to seniors and also the isolation part where the caregivers come in and help with that mental health component of it. So, we have to be able to provide that. And I'm sure as you look at the levy and the increase or maintenance of the levy that we have, sounds like you're looking at a possible increase, that we have to look at some of those special innovative things like the laundry, that can we continue to do that? Of course, if I was a senior, I'd rather have somebody come professionally and do it. I know that those in-home workers, laundry is a big portion of what they do. So, I know you'll have a list of if we maintain the levy, what services we can maintain, if we increase, what we can continue. So, some of those innovative services may have to be, I hate to say, taken away. But I was looking at Meals on Wheels Old, you can't, I mean, you can't even think about, I'll be out protesting if our seniors did not get that. But I was looking at your collaborating organizations that provide services and also different resources. And there was like four pages of them. And just as a clinician, I'm just wondering, the oversight of all these organizations, I know they have their own CEO and all that, but do you guys provide any oversight of all these partners that you have to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing and also reaching the vision that you have? And so, how do you do that?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we do have oversight. So, before we bring a new provider on, we go out and make sure that they have, they can meet all the requirements of the contract. For example, that they have the insurance in place, that they have trained their staff, and that they do background checks as an example. So, we make sure all of those things are in place before we contract with them. Then we go out and do a regular review of them on a regular basis to make sure that they're following the contract. And we also have an innovative tracking system where we measure their quality, and we benchmark their providers to each other to ensure that they're not just meeting the requirements of the contract, but they're providing high-quality service.
Great, great.
And for a provider that may not have good quality scores, we go out and do, you know, we work with them on improving the quality of their service.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate it. And I just have to reiterate that Suzanne and her staff, and I'll bring up transportation again, you guys worked night and day to try to change that. That was one of the big areas that seniors had problems with. And so, I'm just, I've heard great things about the transportation now. So, I'll be interested in looking at your list of if we maintain this levy, what you can maintain the services. If we increase, maybe you'll continue these innovative services. So, I know you're looking at that now strategically, and I'll be interested in seeing that. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. We are not at a point of dealing with the levy at this particular time. That was, hopefully, we got into it, but I didn't understand that that was going to be the case today. So, I want to make sure that it's highlighted, we'll get another chance as the board and so forth to look at the levies. I do want to say thank you all for all the work you do. It's a very difficult, did you want to say something?
Because I'm going to close it out.
No, because I'm going to close it out.
Yeah, I will.
Go ahead and say what you're going to say, then I'm going to close it on now.
Okay. Well, I think, I think you can't look at the levy, you can't look at the services without looking at the levy. It's one and one. And so, whether or not, I know we'll look at it at a later date as far as the levy, but it's good that you came in ahead and let us know where you are within your organization and what you're able to do and what you're not able to do. So, I appreciate the additional information about the levy. So, thank you.
Yes. And then I'm going to close it out.
Just a quick point of information for the board, the mid-cycle review for this particular levy, I believe, is on for 25, 2025. So, as Ms. Burke indicated, in the Tax Lay Review Committee report, there was a substantial section about inflation. At the time, I believe, Council on Aging was still in the process of negotiating some of its longer-term contracts, which hadn't been solidified yet. So, the TLRC at the time, in making the recommendation to the board, recommended that be brought up at the mid-cycle review. But we still have a couple of years for that as well, so we should keep on top of this as we go through the next couple of years.
Thank you. I just don't want anybody to think we're getting ready to do a levy. But what I wanted to say is, as a new person to the board, I'm not completely new, but I'm the newest person to the board. For me, I'd like to see on the TLRC pieces, all of it, because I have to make choices. The zoo wants to, they want to go back and they want, how does that impact, you know, seniors? So, I need to see it all. For me, that's how I work, to kind of see it, so I'm not piecemealing over here and over there, because it's true that we do have finite money and this is the taxpayers going to the, to vote on it, but they don't have a whole lot of, they don't have a menu, it ain't a buffet. We tell them, here's what you can vote on, and it's on or off. And so, I just think for me, it would just be helpful for, the way I like to work, to be able to see all of the, everything that's on the table and looking at, you know, how we might have to stretch and so forth, and not criticizing what's done in the past. I'm talking about the challenges that we face today and the challenges in the future. And I want to say that in memory of people like Clarence Howell and Mildred Howe, you know, senior citizens committing suicide because they don't want to go to, don't want to go to nursing home or can't afford to nurse home. This stuff is real. We never heard of senior citizens, you know, doing a suicide like this. So, I just wanted to put it out there, it's hard as hell being a senior citizen. And they work, they did their time, they bust their butts, and they should be able to retire with some dignity. And I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to help make that possible. And of course, our board, we're all in agreement in trying to work as best we can to have a good quality of life, because we're going to be senior citizens one day, and I hope somebody going to stand up for me. She says she's a senior citizen, but then she'll say, then she'll say, then she'll say she's 25, you know what I'm saying? But no, thank you all very much, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to go with the presentation for Bridge Forward next. We have two former mayors who are here and want to acknowledge them, and you want to introduce it, former Mayor John Cranley and former Mayor Mark Mallory. So, the both of you would want to approach and bring us up to what are we doing? This is concerning the Brent Spence Bridge. We had ODOT present, and there were several people that are here today who had issues. I want to highlight, though, as the board, if my board would indulge me on point, we currently, and Mr. Ludo can attest to this, as the county, we are not at the table officially. We are not leading this project. We are not funding, from my understanding, we have not voted to fund anything. This is a federal highway project. Mr. Beck is back there, if he'll stand up, our engineer who has been working with us as a board, and Mr. Ludo, who have been challenging the fact that we were rejected. I don't know the exact term it's called, but the point is, we don't have no meat at the table. And so, we are fighting that. We are also asking ODOT to support us being at the table, not advisory. Advisory is, you don't have no juice, basically, you have no juice. You can sit there as long as they, we agree on everything. But if we were to disagree, we don't have any juice as an independent body. So, before you get started, I would ask Mr. Ludo, if you will give that update on where, where are we as a county on this? You're trying to get us at the table, but we have been rejected by the federal government.
Yes, just very briefly, the county has asked FHWA for cooperating agency status. We have, we made that request, we were rejected once on that request. We've met directly with FHWA. We have gone back and asked them several clarifying questions on the role between FHWA and ODOT in terms of how ODOT has been directed to participate with the county on this particular project. So, we've gone back, asked some additional questions, and we received a response from FHWA that they're working on a response to those questions. We haven't received the answer yet, but just for the general public who may be watching, the Board of County Commissioners, as the principal agency in the management and ownership of the Metropolitan Sewer District, is responsible for a significant issues related to the consent decree and the major costs in this community for implementation of the federal consent decree as it relates to the elimination of combined and sanitary sewer overflows, which gets heavily into the issue of stormwater, et cetera. So, we feel that there is a major issue of importance that deals directly with the county's role on this project, which is why we've asked for cooperating agency status specifically. I've been in conversations with the city manager as well. We are supportive of each other's positions on this. So, I will keep the board posted. I expect to get something back relatively soon on this from FHWA, and we'll update the board as to our request for that status.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn it over. Mayor Mallory, you have something, you always have something to say. Do you have anything? Hello, Mayor Cranley, hello?
Thank you, Madam President. I am on the agenda, but not until after Gina Brock makes her presentation. But thank you, we appreciate this opportunity. I'll turn it over to Gina.
Hi, everybody who thinks knows me, I'm Gina Brock. I'm an environmental consulting scientist and a member of Bridge Forward. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today to present to you. Let's start with, hold on one second. Okay. Or someone it is. So, just very, very quickly, I don't think we can actually talk about the Brent Spence Bridge project without at least acknowledging that this is what that area looked like in the history. It is not something that we need to go over today, because I think everyone here is well, very knowledgeable about what happened to this particular area. When you see this particular view, it's one I think that is very poignant and most illustrative in my opinion. This is the view from Crew Tower in 1958. This is the same view in the 1960s. I think this is all the illustration that we need to see the amount of Cincinnati that was taken up by this project when it was first built. So, what we found is that there was not a whole lot of current community engagement that we felt that had been done by ODOT. So, we really wanted to reach out to Cincinnati and Hamilton County citizens and really talk to them about how they felt about this project. We think it is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We absolutely feel that the bridge itself, the approaches on both sides are very important. However, it's more important what happens afterwards. The opportunities that we have to improve the connections between neighborhoods, the net benefits to the environment, a more livable urban environment, are too important to forego in this project. So, what we found is that we had two main ways that we solicited opinions from the citizens, and our first is our survey. Our survey asked three main questions. This question was about what level of government do you think is best suited to represent your best interests? And it was overwhelming of the 260 people that took this survey, and that was two days ago, and we had people... ago, and we have people that take the survey every day, so that number just keeps going up. 93.4% feel that's local government, and that's you. And they are truly looking to you to look after their best interest and do exactly what you're doing now, which is engage with this project, engage with ODOT, engage with the people who are building it, and see what we can do. Another question that we asked is, you know, how important is it to take the time to get the design right versus start building it now? Again, a very clear opinion that with the funding secured, now is the time to take, the time to get the design right before starting construction. Though actually, interestingly, when we did a ranked question survey, there was a lot of things here that were important, but one of the things that we did is we described what progressive design build is. And where progressive design build differs from traditional building is, in a traditional building, everyone's familiar with the idea of you design it, you get bids for people who will build it, and then you build the thing. That has all the associated problems with, you know, change orders, you know, you decide you run into a problem, and then it drives the cost up. Progressive design build is a more collaborative effort between the people who are designing and building it and the people who own the project. And when you explain this concept, that you do not have to have the design done when you go to begin your project, that all of a sudden that rearranges people's concerns about what's most important. And right now, the two answers that were most important to people was, one, maintain all on-ramp and off-ramp access points from the interstate, and currently, Bridge Forward's design does this better than ODOT's current design. Also, you have to look at how many people want to minimize interstate footprint and return the land to the region's urban core. Again, clear winner with the Bridge Forward design. So right now, we have had 429 individual letters stating support, actually, that number has gone up, I think it's 431 right now, that explicitly support Bridge Forward's design as something that should be considered and possibly adopted by ODOT or the company that's doing the design-build process. So each one of those letters was sent out to 21 recipients, so lots of people have seen these coming through, and there's only going to be more, because people care about this project for obvious reasons. So right now, I would like to introduce Brian Bowden. He's the president, and he's going to explain what exactly Bridge Forward's design concept is.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you, commissioners, for letting us present to you guys today.
Your microphone up.
Sorry, that's what I did wrong at the city meeting, too. Is this good?
That's great.
Okay. Thank you all for letting us present. I'm going to go through what our design actually is and talk about the differences between it and the ODOT design. And if you guys have any questions, you can feel free to jump in and ask, and I'll clarify for you. This slide was what Gina was talking about. The progressive design build allows you to get started on the project without having everything 100% done. And according to what we understand now, ODOT is not very far along in their designs either. They have made some changes recently, so they still have a long way to go with their designs as well. And the process allows for that, whether they change the designs or something like ours is implemented. Just a couple of points to look at other projects that were done with this method. The Martin Luther King Project was done with this method. When I spoke to City DOTE, they specifically mentioned that they had a design that they wanted to go with that would not have allowed the Taft exit to remain. They told the design team that it was an issue, that they wanted to find a different way with it. The design team came in with a better idea. And so through this process, they were able to change their initial ideas with input from, you know, the design team for innovative ideas, and via also getting information from the community about keeping Freedonia Avenue open, they were able to iterate that design into what we have today, which is a more robust design than would have been if they've gone with the traditional method. Another example, even though this wasn't technically progressive design build, it was definitely built, designed as it was being built, was Fort Washington Way. When this project was first suggested in the mid-1990s, there was a lot of similar discussion about, is this going to slow things down? Can we actually do it? And this project went from a decision to go with it in 1998 in July to open highway in August of 2000. So when we get people to lean in on something, when the engineers are engaged in being innovative, we can really do creative things. And this is a picture that I put in here because I want to reiterate, we're not talking about things in isolation that don't have an impact on the ground. This is the reason we have these discussions, because our riverfront, when I grew up as a kid, wasn't very nice. Parking lots, one stadium, nothing to see. And now we have a world-class front door to the city. So anybody coming to Cincinnati, Hamilton County, the state of Ohio, this is the first thing you see when you come across this bridge. So these things are important for us as we think to the future. There is progress that's been made so far. ODOT has responded to some of the things we've suggested. They removed a ramp in their current design to give us nine acres. They adopted basically one of our exiting strategies so that the network can be well-integrated into the street grid, and they've agreed to do improved pedestrian and cycle infrastructure, which is all positive. And of course, the other thing we know is that funding has been secured. So there has been progress so far. We just look forward to being able to continue that progress. This is their current design. Project is called IW in their lingo, and as you can see, it still takes up a great amount of space to the west edge of downtown there. It's approximately 45 acres of land that they take up there. This is our plan. So we work hard to restrict the footprint, to simplify the entering and exiting, and to maximize the amount of land that can be recovered. And the green area is all land that we believe can be recovered. So I'm going to break this down for you. There's a lot in this picture, and I know it's a lot to look at, so I want to hopefully show you guys what it is. We're going to start with these blue lines, which represent the street grid currently, local streets adjacent to the project. Next, we're going to put in the interstates themselves. The blue is three lanes each direction for I-75, which is what the ODOT plan delivers as well, three lanes through traffic, and the two lanes of Interstate 71 going into the Fort Washington Way trench. Then we have a proposal to extend the street grid to the west to create some urban space that could be developed for, put to the market for development, and then connect potentially across that into Queens Gate. So it's about connectivity, it's about looking forward to things we might do in the future. Next, we have the connections from Interstate 71 to 75, so you'll still be able to get from one highway to the other as you can today. And this is lane-for-lane equivalent to the ODOT proposal. And then we have in orange, the local exiting traffic. So in the ODOT plan, the traffic will be on the existing bridge that's getting off in downtown or getting on from downtown, going across the existing bridge. The through traffic, 71 and 75, will be on the new companion bridge. So our plan uses that plan as a base, and we are still able to configure the Ohio approaches in a way that still maximizes the land to a much greater extent than what they have looked at so far. And one of the big questions we have grappled with here is, how does US-50 flow through this area? It's not part of the interstate system, but it runs right through here. So we have worked hard to find a way to maintain that and make it safe and safer, possibly even. This shows the main trunk line in pink. They are going in a couple of below-grade sections there. With this setup, we're able to make the curves more gentle coming into and going out of this, so it's actually a little safer than what we have today. You don't have to slow down as much. And then, putting it all back together, this shows the connections from US-50 to 71, 75 South. So we maintain everything with US-50 as it is currently aligned today. So we are one-for-one with everything that ODOT has delivered on the project. And these sections are not, I use the T-word tunnels, they are really just below-grade sections, and we have experience with doing this. Lytle Park is built in this way. It's just basically a road that runs underneath another road. So it's not the boogeyman that some people make it out to be. We've done it, we know how to do it. And in fact, Lytle Park was the first time in the building of the highway system that the people in the city got together and said, hey, maybe we shouldn't run it through like this, maybe we should make it a little nicer and do something on top of it. And so that's how we were able to save this part of the city from just being highway lanes. And so this shows everything back together again, just to reiterate that, we get the same improvements, we maintain the connections, and everything can be done in a footprint that is smaller than what we have today. This is just a quick summary of what I've talked about. Important things to us are, by extending the street grid and creating more street grid, we allow more connection points, and those connection points can be slower, so they are better for, they're safer, they're better for people on foot and on bikes, and they allow people to get around more easily through the street grid. Separating local traffic is one of the important things for ODOT, so we maintain that. But here's the big thing. We, as I said, we match, we improve, we have the ability to connect west in the future potentially, we simplify, we reclaim that land, we set up a situation where there can be post-project development. And that's very important. And as Mr. Ludo said, while we're digging in there, by having a smaller footprint, we mitigate some of those stormwater effects. Maybe that can have a positive impact on that as well. And as Gina said, given the progressive design build process, we have time to get these changes looked at and get the project built on time if they choose to implement any of them, and we hope they do. And so it's all about this green section here, it's all about opportunity. Getting this land back could be used for anything that is needed in the community. It could be entertainment, it could be housing, it could be businesses, it could be civic structures, it could be parks. It's whatever people want to do there, whatever is important at the time. But if we don't get the design of the highway right, we miss that opportunity, we won't have it again for another 100 years. So that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Can I ask you, are you an engineer or architect?
I'm an urban designer. I have a master's in urban planning and resilience from Xavier. I'm not an engineer, but the person who put those together does have an engineering degree, and we are getting them looked at by an engineer, and luck on wood, so far, it looks like everything's laying out, so.
Thank you, just because people are watching us on YouTube.
Right, correct.
Be able to introduce yourself properly. Thank you. I guess next is the two mayors, two former mayors.
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. You asked Brian if he's an engineer, and he said no. I actually am an engineer. I'm a civil engineer by training in high school, at least, and I don't know if that counts for anything, but I thought I would have put it out there. Brian, thank you very much for your presentation. Gina, thank you as well. You're going to hear from former Mayor John Cranley in just a moment. I just wanted to take this opportunity, first of all, to look at the three of you. I have not had the privilege of standing here at this podium and looking at the history that's been made in Hamilton County. It is awesome. I just want to start by saying that.
Thank you.
The Brent Spence Bridge has been an ongoing issue, as you know, for many years. When I was in the mayor's office, there was a lot of conversation that we had with ODOT about the Brent Spence Bridge. Back then, we thought that the bridge itself would be reconditioned. We didn't know there would be an additional bridge built to the west of it. We also thought that the only way to get it done would be with tolls. That has all changed. The President of the United States came and laid out that there's federal money for this project, and therefore, everyone in the region is excited, and it's going to move forward. The question is, how will it move forward? Between Gina and Brian, they talked about some of the projects in the past that have been done with ODOT, and how the design started and the vision started, but how the project ended up. One of the examples cited was Martin Luther King Exchange. And Madam President, as you know, you worked on that quite a bit yourself. That started out in one place, but ended up with a totally different design. Fort Washington Way, the same thing. And I should point out that the idea for Fort Washington Way did not come from an engineer, came from a local citizen. And that local citizen engaged people, got people excited about the vision. The engineers then stepped in to see if the project was viable in the way that he talked about it. Turns out that it was, so we have Fort Washington Way. There's some other projects that started out in a particular way and ended up in another way, and I'll give you a different example. The Hoppo Street Exchange was something that my administration worked on when I was mayor. There were probably three, maybe four alternatives that were presented from ODOT as it evolved and as it changed, and as they received input from us and from the community about how that should be structured. And then the last project that I want to talk about is a project that goes way back, the Coal Rain Connector. In the 1960s and 70s, land was acquired for the Coal Rain Connector, which would have connected I-74 up through College Hill and through North College Hill and Mount Healthy and beyond, all the way to 275. But the community said for years that they didn't want the project, that the project wasn't necessary. ODOT kept insisting that it should be done, but finally relented and said, you're right, we don't want to do this project anymore, we're going to take it off the books. They took it off the books, and then a number of years later, they turned the land back over to the city of Cincinnati, and we used that land to develop a city-rama and built some number of houses there, 40 or 50 houses, I can't remember. The point that I'm trying to make is that the Ohio Department of Transportation is charged with doing transportation projects, of course, not just here, but across the state of Ohio. And when they receive information from communities, when they receive information from elected officials, when they receive information from interested parties, they do respond. They have a, in my mind, they have a track record of working with people when there is a consensus, when there is a direct message, when there is a singular vision for what a community wants to achieve. ODOT does respond, they work in partnership. And I think all of you at some level have worked with ODOT on projects all across this county and beyond. And so I just want to emphasize the fact that not only do they accept alterations, changes, different ideas about projects, they look for it. ODOT is asking for public input. This is the time for that public input. The city of Cincinnati has made clear through the passage of a resolution that they would like to see perhaps an alternative to what ODOT has presented thus far. We are asking, of course, for the same thing from the county. We have an opportunity to present a united front, so that we present and complete a project that is of benefit in a great and grand way for the next century. That's really what we're talking about, is the next 100 years. Whatever the configuration of the entrance ramps and exit ramps to the new bridge ends up being, we will live with that for the next century. So I just want to leave you with that weight, and with that bit of gravity, and that bit of information, and that is my way of introducing our next speaker, the former mayor of the great city of Cincinnati, John Cranley.
Thank you, Mayor Mallory. It is great to be here with all of you. Madam President, Vice President, Commissioner Dumas, it's an honor to be here with all of you. As I said at the city hall, every dollar that's going into this project is public money, federal, state, local. We live in a democracy. This isn't a private development project, it's a public project. In my opinion, whatever design decisions are made should be made by elected officials, and should be made in public, not in private rooms. This is a once-in-a-hundred-year decision, and I think it's critical that our elected officials be in the room, should be in the room, not take no for an answer when told that you should, you obviously should be in the room, and I'm glad you were appealing or opposing that decision that tried to keep you out of the room. But even if they keep you out of the room, you still have a voice. And ODOT and the Federal Highway Administration have the legal right to build whatever they want. They can do it at the opposition of the city, they can do it at the opposition of the county. The question is, will you tell them that you agree, or you want some modifications? The city has said unanimously they'd like to see a better design. Obviously, there could be trade-offs that come out from looking at those other designs that could get them to reevaluate that decision. Right now, I think it's safe to assume that until there's an official act that elected officials, at least until last week, support the current status quo design. And as Mayor Mallory said, in the past, it has been widely concluded, I think accurately, that the highway designs of the 50s and the 60s were bad. Bad for the West End, 75, bad for Evanston and I-71. But since then, all of us together, many of us working literally together, like Madam President and myself, on MLK helped to repair some of those mistakes. Same with Fort Washington Way. It can be done again, except that this time, the stakes are even bigger, because it's the biggest project, federal investment in our lifetime, most likely. If it's possible to pull up that connection, I just wanted to point one thing out. If it's a way to get that back up there, that last picture with the, yeah, the one, or the one before that, yeah. The one that showed all that. Yeah, right there. So you see where all that green is. It's important to understand that ODOT's, right now, the vast majority of the current green is I-75. And that's because the current bridge turns into I-75 when you're coming from the airport in downtown Cincinnati. So if you want it still going straight, you just go straight. And currently, your I-75 is that green space. But they're building the bridge to the west. So this plan aligns with ODOT's I-75 north. Think about that. We're not suggesting that I-75 move. ODOT's already decided that I-75 north is going to move to the west. So under what universe do we not get that green space back? Why wouldn't we? Footprint of 75 in that green is going away no matter what, no matter what. So what's there now such that we wouldn't get that green space? Not much. There's a ramp from Kentucky to Fifth Street. On this plan, that's one of the changes we're recommending, that the ramp go to the new collector-distributor road that takes advantage of the western footprint. The second thing that would have to shift, as Brian mentioned, and there's been multiple iterations of this flexibly, is to change slightly the routing of Route 50. But in response to many people, including I know Commissioner Drehouse, this effort has gone out of its way to find ways to keep the nonstop access to 50 west, east, north, and south as we currently have. But we're not saying it's, that this plan is take it or leave it. In fact, this plan has evolved multiple times when we've gotten previous feedback from ODOT. There are folks that have said that this effort is inflexible. The opposite is true. The opposite is true. This effort has constantly made changes. What the city council asks, and what we're hoping you'll adopt something similar, is, "ODOT, please work your hardest in good faith to get as close to this as possible, and come back with a real plan that says, okay, you want to recapture that green space, here's what you can do, here's how you can do it, and here are the trade-offs." Short of that, I think it's fair for them to conclude that they're fine, that the county is fine with the current plan. And I think what we want is for the elected officials to decide. We hope that you'll decide to ask for changes. Either way, we think it's important for the elected officials to weigh in on what they really want to see happen. That is, the current design came out of public sessions in 2004. I don't remember those, and I was on city council at the time. Clearly, thinking on urbanism has changed since then, and we have a great opportunity to make the change. Neither, Madam President, we weren't engineers when we told MLK you can't get rid of Taft. But we did have the conviction to say, do this as best that you can. So we encourage you to pass whatever format, whatever language, I know we sent along with the city council did, if that's appropriate, great, if you want to amend it, that's fine too. But we do think it's important that there be an official statement from the county to say, hey, come back with your best effort to capture this land. We thank you for your time. We're here for questions. Greg Fisher is going to make some closing statements, and then we're here, of course, for any discussion.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Greg Fisher. I'm the chairman of Fisher Homes. I've been passionately involved in the bridge and around the bridge since 2015. A lot of people ask me why. Certainly an understandable question. My first home, I built my first home in 1999 when I was in college in OTR. I studied civil engineering at UC, and as a co-op, I walked down Central Parkway to work on the Fort Washington Way project. The specific part of the project I worked on was driving piles for the foundation for the caps that are currently being considered. That was a chance where I got to see the private sector, Carl Linder and others, contribute to make, build that foundation for the opportunity that is currently being pondered, and I found that inspiring. I also appreciate that a vibrant urban core benefits our entire region, and I'm convinced that a vision for a better Brent Spence Bridge will be a tremendous boost to downtown and positively affect our region as a whole. I can also identify that Queens Gate is well underutilized and would be, could be a great, much greater asset for our community. I appreciate the power of first impression. The bridge corridor is how the large majority of our residents and visitors are introduced to our city. Much like Fort Washington Way, change the aesthetics and development potential of the banks, the design of this corridor can unlock great potential of redevelopment and change the front door to our city. I'd be remiss if I did not thank ODOT, KYTC, city and county officials, the Chamber and CRBC for its commitment for 20-plus years of making this top, keeping this project top of mind, and ultimately helping deliver the funding when the bill passed. We can't squander this opportunity. Fortunately, ODOT and highway officials have allowed for input and are currently considering all community input as part of the progressive design-build process. So here lies the challenge. ODOT will be awarding the contract shortly to a design-build team that will be issuing, will be issued the notice to proceed on July 15th. We don't want to slow it down. During my involvement in the last eight years, it's been become clear that subject matter experts are critical to navigating the process. Can you pull up that last slide for me? So given the critical timing, I've involved an independent highway engineer in firm in the last three weeks to evaluate the bridge-forward design as compared to the current IW. So that's what you're seeing here on the slide. Additionally, we expect the same firm to come up with further suggestions and improvement with both plans, both IW and this bridge-forward plan, along with more, accepting more community feedback. While the valuation is not fully complete, in general, the work has found that the alternative design concepts are geometrically sound and technically feasible. The work of this consultant will be shared and discussed in a collaborative fashion with the local community, government officials like yourselves, ODOT, and the progressive design-build team, so as all may contribute to achieving the best outcome for our city. As a community, we want the project to move on schedule. It is time to provide clear, concise, and thoughtful input for what our community wants so that ODOT and the team of leading engineers in the country can get to work. I'm here today asking the commission to be clear on what you want for our community on the Brent Spence Bridge corridor, and hopefully that'll be support for a city-centric design that will fully realize this tremendous opportunity that we've been handed. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. We had had, ODOT came and made a presentation, and you all had reached out to us, and we're working on getting some dates, so I appreciate you all. We wanted to give you the opportunity to present to us and show everyone throughout the county that's watching us on YouTube what you're talking about, and say it in your own words and not just read what's in the newspaper or in the news clips. I will open it up for Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks to Gina and Brian. I've met with them a number of times. I don't know how long ago that was, but it's been a while back. I want to say it was during COVID, maybe, but anyways, been looking at these designs and having this conversation for a while. I do appreciate the attention to US-50 and not making changes that would have really disrupted that traffic flow over to the west side of Cincinnati. Thanks all to, also to Mayor Cranley, Mayor Mallory, and Greg for coming in and talking to all of you guys about this. So I concur that this is a huge opportunity for this community. It's exciting because we've got the federal government finally stepping in with funding to get this done. Because I, too, was part of the conversation about tolling back in the day, and that was not a very popular idea. And we, at that time, we talked about how the federal government, it's their, this is what they do, this is what government does, right? They provide infrastructure. And so this is being a critical corridor in the country. We're finally seeing that come to fruition. So I'm very grateful to the Biden administration and to Congress for making that happen. We, though, as Mayor Cranley knows, have invested just to the north on the Western Hills Viaduct, and so that is also a critical piece of this as you move north, and the county and the city both contributed our shares to get that thing going, and that's in progress as well. So a lot going on. And then we got the Convention Center District, which is right alongside all of this, and we are pledged with the city to look at things holistically instead of piecemeal. So it's not just the Convention Center is theirs, the Millennium Lot is ours, you know, we're not doing it in that way. We're doing it in a way that makes sense, that is collaborative, and that looks at the whole thing as a district, and this plays into that conversation as well because of the property to the west of the Convention Center to the east of the highway system, as you, the spaghetti highway, as you point out. So I see this as a tremendous opportunity to think about all of that stuff, all rolled into one, and that's kind of where my lens is. I had had conversations with ODOT early on, and, you know, to their credit, ODOT is trying to construct a transportation project, because that's what they do. They're the Department of Transportation. And so I said, all right, understand, appreciate the lens of transportation, but as an elected official, and I think we all share this lens, we're looking at this through a community lens and an economic development lens. So how do we layer all of that together to come up with a transportation project that has added benefits? And this is the way, I think, this board has been thinking through a lot of projects, is that, you know, there has to be, we just, we're at the Finley Market Garage, there has to be a community benefit to the infrastructure that we're building, or we've missed the mark on that infrastructure and on that build. So that is where I have come from. So I have seen that the ideas already have had an impact on some of the most recent designs I've seen from ODOT, primarily in my, I will just be honest with you, my top priorities, US-50 has been taken care of, freeing up the property, as much property as possible, to allow for us to look at Convention Center and that district differently. We've always talked about, possibly when we have the money, expanding the Convention Center exhibit space to the east, because that's all we had the opportunity to think about. This allows us to think about maybe moving that to the west, or something else to the west, depending on the amount of acreage that's freed up. So I have seen that in their plans, and I'm grateful to Bridge Forward for bringing that to our attention and saying, wait a minute, there's an opportunity to reduce that spaghetti highway and reduce the footprint of what we've got going on there. So I appreciate your work on that. And then also having this kind of lens of, you know, we've not gotten this right sometimes in the past, and so we have to be open to these ideas and to community input. So I've got a couple of questions related to your presentation. When I think about redesign and changing things up at this juncture, I worry about cost and I worry about time. So can you, I don't know if you, you didn't, you touched on it a little bit, but can you be a little more direct about what the impact might be related to both cost and time?
So again, I've hired this engineer that's working through it. We don't have a cost evaluation yet. There's certainly pluses and minuses and costs versus benefits, and that still need to be evaluated. We know, for example, there's less bridge on Brian Bridge Forward Plan. Obviously, there's a trench in cover of US-50, and there's different retaining walls and such, just a lot of the same kind of thing you saw with the MLK interchange. So the answer is, we don't know yet. And again, this is what, ultimately, we want ODOT to help us evaluate, right, is walk us through all these options, explore, how can we make it happen? What are the trade-offs? And that's the engagement we're looking for in the next two months.
Okay. And I can appreciate that the design-build nature of this allows for some ongoing conversation, so I appreciate that.
It's not totally neutral, because they have their IW plan, right? So unless they hear from the elected officials, I don't think they're particularly motivated to change the plan. And as you point out, they've already made some amendments to the plan. You know, the fundamental issue, I think, is that green space that is now going to be, if nothing changes, going to be preserved solely for the highway access to Fifth Street from Kentucky, because they've already eliminated the access to Fifth Street coming south in order to save up that block by the Convention Center. What's interesting about the Bridge Forward Plan is it restores access to Fifth Street north and south. So by having a corridor, collector-distributor road on the far western edge of the new street grid, you can reclaim the Fifth Street exit coming south, which would be good for the Convention Center, good for the Convention Center Hotel, to not lose that access to Fifth Street, and similarly, keep the access to Fifth Street coming north from Kentucky, because you still come in on it, you just have one more block to get in, because downtown essentially would start a block to the west of where it currently is. And I, you know, I can't help but say that when the federal government is telling you that you can't even be a cooperating agency or participating agency or whatever, you should at least give them a piece of your mind as to what you want, and let the record show that if they ignore you, then they've ignored you, and you all said what you really wanted. It is odd to me that we hear that there are folks who are saying that it's somehow dangerous, people who said they won't let you be a cooperating agency for you to express your opinions. If these, if advocating for more land reclamation and a better connection is annoying to them, they can just ignore us all. In fact, as I mentioned at City Hall, that's what happened on 74 at Cincinnati State. Dr. Odell Owens and I worked together and failed to try to maintain the access from 74 at Cincinnati State. We both thought it would be good for the students and for access to the uptown, and ODOT ignored us. That was a failed effort, unlike MLK and Fort Washington Way, which turned out good. But what didn't happen is when Dr. Owens and I went in the front page of The Enquirer and did other things and said, please change this, ODOT didn't say, well, the fact that you're advocating for a different plan, that what we plan to do has hurt our feelings and therefore we're not going to build this 74 connection anymore. They didn't pull the money away. They didn't cancel the plan. They kept going. And so this fear that somehow raising your voice, when you've already been told that your voice is going to be discounted, is somehow going to cause the federal government to pull the money, is ludicrous. It's totally ludicrous. I will also tell you, and I'm happy, would love to include you if you guys want to, you know, go on record with a resolution of some kind, that I'm in, I'm outreaching to the Secretary Buttigieg now, and hope to schedule a meeting in the next couple of months to clarify that, under his leadership, this kind of progressive design of reclamation of urban space from the history of what happened to Kenyon Bar on the West End is exactly how he wants the Department of Transportation to operate.
I know, I don't have the impression that us arguing about our level of cooperation is at all jeopardizing anything. I think that would be overstating our power, perhaps. However, we're adamant that we want a seat at the table and we want to be able to participate. And it's not only all that you've put in front of us, there are stormwater issues here, there are MSD issues here that are directly county issues. And so we have made the argument, we didn't win the argument, but we are trying again, we're taking another run at it, because I do think that it's important to have the county at the table, but I, in no way, shape, or form, want to suggest that that's going to delay or get rid of the project. I mean, yikes. So one other question, I don't want to hog the microphone, I just have one other question for you. So you also talked about improvements to pedestrian and bike pathways. Could you just elaborate just a little bit? Don't take, because I don't want to hog the time, but what did you mean by that? And where would those appear on the plan?
Can I comment one more question? Your previous question, one other thing, was the timing. ODOT, it's clear that, again, the July 15th is the critical date. That's when they want the notice to proceed for the engineers, and they've been clear, they want to be settled at that point and they want to run with it. The current plan that they have IW is between 10 and 20% complete. So it's very iterative. The plan I showed you was seven or eight percent. I mean, you know, it wouldn't take a lot to get them close to where they are. It's not a giant setback from a schedule standpoint to be working from this level. Again, the engineer, the plan that worked from Bridge Forward spent three weeks on it to get there so far.
Thank you.
If I may, everyone has spoken to the engineering and the political aspect of this much, at a much higher level than I can, but one thing I would like to point out to your previous question is, before they actually put out the RFP, and we're talking like a couple weeks before they put out the RFP, they went to the city of Coming weeks before they put out the RFP, they went to the city of Covington and gave them everything they asked for. That included saving some of Pieselberg by slumming down the design, putting in a storm system that goes from the top of the hill all the way to the bottom. And never were they threatened with any sort of detriment to the timing or the cost of it. They gave them what they wanted because they asked, and they didn't threaten them with any of the things that people are concerned about when it comes to cost and timeline.
Before we get to the next, I want to, because I got to get to Commissioner Dumas, but I want to straighten something out, because this is something that I think we've got three very strong vocal women on this board with a track record of getting stuff done. So I want to be clear, I don't want to go YouTube, go too far about the point about, oh, we're afraid, we're not afraid. We have made some of the boldest steps in 150 years of this government, of county government. So we're not afraid of that. We have stepped forward, MLK was going to be 35 years down the road. And I was on a transportation committee and had to work the deal with the governor. It was not on the top of mind. And we got that done. I was on council, we had Fort Washington Way, and it came before my committee that I chaired. So I don't think that that is the issue. Our issue is that we want to have a real seat at the table. We don't want to be just out, when you look at your elected officials, we outside with y'all. I mean, you electing us to be, have a little more power than you got. So we're not out here trying to just make a statement. You know, we're supposed to be on the inside, trying to get to the table. And so our engineer back there, Mr. Beck, said, we got to fill out some paperwork from the White House, or whatever they do at the federal government, for us to be at the table. We don't want to be advising and grinning and skinning a whole lot of meet and greet meetings. At least I know, I'm gonna say I don't. I don't bring me to meet and greets. I'm here to be at the table to represent the people that elected us. And so that's what we told the administrator to do, that there's a process and some paperwork and all that. But that doesn't mean we're weak. That means we're smart. And we're trying to get to the table. So when we do hit a gavel, is listened to. We have a number of issues that have come forward about this bridge, and some of them you brought out. Bucktown is left out. Bucktown got hurt behind the bridge. Black community that was on the banks, living in the flood plain. There's no evidence that Bucktown ever existed. You guys brought that forward. We want, I brought that up, we want Bucktown. There's a missing group from all of this. We were at the legislature, and we was leading this stuff. So we got to bring our legislative group, who can make a call to ODOT, who votes on ODOT's budget. So I wanted to just pull that there are several different layers of things. And former Mayor Cranley, you know how I am about fluffy resolutions. You know, I don't like them. I like to have power and meat on the bones. But I wanted to just bring that up, because I don't want anybody watching here, saying, Oh, man, they're so scared to say so. We done told them off. We done told them. I had, there's a national group that says that they have no inclusion. Go get YouTube, I'll put it in their hands, delivered. So we've got a lot of issues. We got inclusion issues, and I'm not talking about workforce. They're running with workforce, they want me to run around the neighborhood with some flyers, talking about, we got some jobs in 2025, 2026. I told them, No. So workforce is the, kind of the lower hanging fruit. We've got to get the right design, we got the right people involved. But at the same time, we don't want to be blamed that we're slowing or holding it up, because this is the closest we've ever gotten. I was there with the toes and all. This is the closest we ever got to actually getting this thing done. So it still is a balancing approach. I want to open up to Commissioner Dumas, who's been waiting.
Hope you get that seat at the table.
Yeah, we gonna fight for it. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Comments? We cannot assume that everyone knows who Bridge Forward is. So I think not now, you don't necessarily have to do it now, maybe on the website, our website, or whatever, who you, who you actually are. Are you a for-profit group, nonprofit group? You know, when did you come around? Did you just start? It sounds like you had a history of doing some other things with other entities as it relates to bridges. So we can't assume people that are watching know, because I would say, well, they came with an alternate plan, but who are they? Sort of like President Reese with Sanibel, are you an engineer? So it's even deeper than that. Who is Bridges Forward? So, and also, I want to ask Mayor Cranley, former Mayor Cranley, you've been here with former Mayor Mallory, are you saying that you support the Bridge Forward Plan? Is that what you're here for, to say that you do support their plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And as, just so you know, as we said in our op ed as well, we don't expect it to be adopted exactly as they've shown it. But we know that that green space is no longer going to be 75. And we think it would be a shame not to recapture it.
So as you have evaluated their plan, as much as it is complete, you see it as a better alternative than what ODOT, ODOT has given us?
It's much better. What we currently, what we currently have is essentially the status quo. And I don't believe anyone thinks that the original design of 75 was good. It wasn't good for the West End. And it's widely mocked as a spaghetti highway. It's been so long that we've forgotten, you know, that that land used to be available for housing, or whatever it is people might want for it now. But yeah, we think that we can do a lot better.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And lastly, I'm a little perplexed, I guess. Where's Mr. Fisher? Okay. And trying to understand your role in this process, I know you see all that beautiful green space. Do you have a plan for homes in that area?
No, I did have, I think I had a question from press on that. If, if, single family homes, suburban single family homes is the highest and best use of that property, I, I, I'm just gonna say, there's no way that single family homes is the highest and best use for that property. I'm confident that I won't be building houses there. I have no economic interest in the project.
Okay. So how did you get involved with this, then?
It started, actually, Brian was introduced to me. I don't know, how long ago was that? 18, 19?
Twenty.
Twenty? Yeah, 2020. I had already spent a lot of time working on the bridge, met with Denise well before, with a different way to solve problem. I was looking at regional through traffic. Very under, had a deep understanding of traffic counts, where the traffic was going. And then when Brian was, I was presented with the solution that Brian had, I was very supportive of it. And the first thing we did was go through a level of engineering to make sure it was relatively real before we brought light to it. And since then, I guess we've been rallying the community. But I think Brian should get the opportunity to talk about who Bridge Forward is. Again, I'll say, I'm supportive.
I'm not asking that. I'll get that information, I'm sure. But you did light up a little bit when I said about single family homes, so.
Yeah, I promise, I promise it won't be singles.
Okay.
Let me just say, when I was suggested to talk to Greg Fisher, I literally was like, You mean the guy that builds suburbia? This is urban. So, yeah, I was skeptical at first, but, you know, he's got a great mind, and thinking about things at a regional level, bypass would have taken traffic off the bridge, which means you don't have to have the impact. So I understood where he was coming from with that, so.
So how long has your organization been established, Bridge Forward?
So this came out of something that was just a brainchild of mine while I was getting my master's degree at Xavier. We formed about a year and a half ago, to just kind of bring it forward in a way where hopefully people can get behind us.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can you answer the question on the Vice President Drehouse about the bike? Can someone do that?
Yeah, so.
Bike trail, rather.
Bike and pedestrian.
The bike and pedestrian. So when, as an urban designer, we look at space and how people exist in a space. A lot of times, we look at these drawings, and they're from 10,000 feet. But that's not where human beings live. Human beings live on the ground. We walk the city streets. And we are kind of timid creatures. And this is going to sound strange, but it takes a lot to get people to get out and walk somewhere. And so the more inviting you can make that space, the better. There is currently a sidewalk that goes across the highway. You can walk to Channel 19 studio on Seventh Street, is probably the loneliest, worst walk of your life. So people don't do it. It's just human nature. By shortening the width of the highway, by creating the blocks, what happens is you entice people to come out of hiding and actually use the infrastructure you built. So while the current plan will enhance it and make it better, it still won't be used as well if people aren't comfortable getting out on the bikes, getting out on their feet, walking across. But if you create an extra block of city, and reduce the highway footprint to a few hundred feet, you'll get people out there all the time. That's what happens with the banks. People walk down from the banks all the time, from downtown to the park and back again. Does that make sense?
Yes, I do.
We're patiently waiting.
Thank you. But the green space, again, since you have the plan almost developed completely, what was zoning for that green space, would you think would be the most appropriate?
I would think that it, being up against the downtown core like it is, some pretty heavy utilization would be good. Mixed use of some sort, you know, like the things that are going on down at the banks, it could be smaller. You know, this is just my thoughts on this issue.
What's in your plan for the green space?
Nothing is currently in the plan for my green space.
Nothing at this time?
Nothing at this time. We are actually getting a study done to look at some alternatives for that. But that's, like, that's what I was trying to say before, it's not my decision to make. I'm just trying to make sure that the land is there, so the people whose decision it is can have the opportunity to do that.
So your goal is basically to get the space and then allow the local government.
As Commissioner Drehouse said, you know, when I looked at it and saw the conversations about the Convention Center a few years back, my mind initially went to that immediately. You know, at the time, the arena was being talked about as well. They wanted you guys to buy their facility, basically. And it's like, well, maybe you can put an arena there. I don't know. Those are questions for somebody with a higher pay grade answer.
Anything else, Commissioner?
You got anything else, Commissioner?
No, I have nothing.
You sure?
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Ludo.
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Brian was there. I didn't know Brian, in terms, I think there are some northern parts of this project that are not progressive design build, I think a more traditional project delivery. Does the Bridge Forward Plan extend to those areas at all? Or is it, or is it just confined to the progressive design build areas? Just so we adequately scope what we're talking about here.
Sure. We have looked further north. We have ideas. If somebody would like to engage us to talk about that, I'd be happy to do that. I think there are possibilities up there. In about 2010, 2011, the city put out a plan where they talked about developing stuff up around Union Terminal. I think there are better ways to connect Union Terminal to the West End, to make it feel less like you're crossing a divide to get to it. So there are things that could be done up there. And we have lots of smart people. A lot of our volunteers have given us suggestions for that. And if that's able to be part of the conversation, I would love to have that conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, because there's a portion that will be strictly the RFP, I guess. What is the process? Construction, whatever. We got the same one that leaves.
Build phase, yeah.
Yeah, that one that, you know, never can hit diversity, because they claim they put it out for bid. But we, the progressive, they've been really getting excited about. So I guess the thought, like you said, was, does the progressive go all the way through the whole project? Or would you recommend, and you can get that to us, are you recommending only the part that they talking about, which is the bridge? But when you get off the bridge, there's other areas that they've got that they're going to do the traditional ODOT way.
My understanding is that portion cuts off about Lynn Street. So there, north, is the traditional method.
Yeah. So we want to know from your group. So you have a volunteer group, people who are concerned about the city. I think, I think it's a good thing. I'd like to see some of the students at some of the, like you said, Xavier and all that. So they're here. No, I'm just saying, I want that in there. You're here, but I'm saying.
They're here.
I think this is an opportunity of a lifetime.
UC students.
We're, UC students, I'm sorry. UC, Xavier, whoever, all of them. I think this is a great opportunity that we would, we would have. Fortunately, we're not the ones, the head decide, decision making. I would like to ask, I know you all want us to do some type of resolution. I like to work with, I do think there's something on the record we should have. And I'd like to look at what Cincinnati has done. I know they sent, you all sent us some languages broad enough to give us wiggle room. And there's some things we want to make sure, and at least I know I'd like to make sure in there, the diversity piece, I like to, so I'd like to work on that with the administration, and then allow my colleagues to look at it and see if that's something that they would like to do. July 15th is the deadline, so we got to get something in before then. But I also think our resolution should include the fact that we should be at the table as a, as a partner, decision maker, naming some of the things that Vice President Drehouse brought up as well, in terms of the stormwater component. I don't know if I necessarily want to say what to do with the extra land, but I know the stormwater pieces that we have, and the Western Hills Viaduct that we have, and then the inclusion that we are working on as a board. And we have several programs that we want to see some of those apprenticeships partnering with that we fund. We've talked about the Urban League project, et cetera. So I would like to work with Mr. Ludo, can we work together to have something that all of us can take a look at, and we can go from there. I want to thank all of you volunteering your time and stepping forward to come up with something that's going to make sense. We just had the senior program, we'll see senior citizens, and you guys will be the ones saying about how we're going to go across the bridge. And I do want to have a balance, because I'll tell you right now, I'm not walking across the Brent Spence Bridge. I'm driving over to Kentucky. I'm sorry, I'm going to drive. But also, I want to ask that we involve our legislative group from here. I think that's very important, because there will be state matching funds that has to go to this. So they will have a lot of power. And then Mr. Fisher, I don't know if he's left already. We got something else for you, CDF, we got some affordable housing that's needed. We got some senior housing that's needed. So we got another role for you to play. But thank you all for bringing this forward, and that's the next steps that we will try to take.
Can I just, I think I've got the city's resolution in front of me, and I've gone through it. I do think it's a good starting point. These are a lot of things that they included that I think makes sense. But we, yeah, it would want to add on some of our own ideas.
Issues that are more pertinent to you, so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll get that, Mr. Ludo, you'll work on that with your team. And then Holly, catch Mr. Fisher in the hallway. We need some affordable housing for senior citizens. All right. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay. We're very excited. We got one more item. Or you can go, I understand if you have to leave. Next on is enterprise zone application for General Tool. And we have Catherine Fitzgerald, Vice President Alloy, and Melanie Hoffman, Vice President of Finance for General Tool Company. Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Catherine Fitzgerald with Alloy Development. For your consideration, we have an enterprise zone agreement proposed for General Tool to build a 55,000 square foot building in the Arrow Hub in Evendale. It's really to move their manufacturing of generators for the Navy Destroyers portion of their business to this location. And then they will backfill their Redding location. Again, this will allow Redding to handle more business. Redding currently has 244 jobs and 295,000 square feet. We did reach out to Redding. They have no concerns about this project, and they were not able to handle this expansion. And I will say, the average salary for the new positions is 88, over 88,000 per position. This is just an overview of the project. Sorry about that. I was just going over. In terms of construction and jobs, the investment will be $10.5 million for this 55,000 square foot facility. Forty-seven new positions over three years, with total new payroll of 4.14 million. Again, as I said, an average salary of over 88,000 dollars per job. We are recommending a tax abatement of 75% for 10 years to support this project. Evendale has passed a resolution on April 18th. In support of the incentive, construction is anticipated to start the summer of 2023 and be completed by fall of 2024. General Tool has stressed that this incentive is necessary to do this project in Hamilton County. Melanie Hoffman, Vice President of Finance for General Tool is here, as well as Mark Elma, the manager for the Building, Planning and Zoning Department for the Village of Evendale.
Okay, thank you. Would both of you like to come up and say a word?
Good afternoon, Melanie Hoffman, General Tool. I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to consider this. We're very passionate about manufacturing and putting jobs back in Hamilton County, and we're really excited about this opportunity.
Can you tell me where's the ad, where at on Redding? I know it's Evendale.
So we actually have two facilities. We, our main plant is in Reading and we also have an annex campus on Woodlawn. And this will be our third site, which would be in Reading. I should have backed up. So General Tool is a defense and aerospace contractor. It's family-owned. It's a small business. It's mainly, about 210 of our employees are in Reading.
Moving or this is an expansion?
It's an expansion. We pursued a further expansion with Reading. And due to the land constraints at our current facility, we weren't able to have an accommodation in Reading. So we, the plan is the 47 jobs will go to Evendale and we're going to hire the 47 jobs backfilled in Reading. So we can grow the business as well as support the project this is for. Correct. Sorry, there's so many people that want to transfer to the new buildings. That's why we're going to, either if they don't transfer to the new facility, we will replace the job at Reading.
So you're in Reading, Ohio?
Correct.
And then you're going to build a new facility?
In Evendale.
That will be in Evendale, but you will not be closing down Reading?
No.
Okay.
We will maintain operations at the current level we do today.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm Mark Elmer. I'm the Building Manager for the Village of Evendale. I'm here for David Elmer, who's our Economic Development Director. He had another meeting, so he couldn't be here in person. We started working with General Tool. It was early, early last year. We toured their facility to make sure that they met the kind of vision of Arrow Hub. If you're not familiar with Arrow Hub, it's kind of right behind St. Rita, it's right off 75. St. Rita, excuse me, there's no S. Right off 75, we have a bunch of land that we've been preparing, pad-ready sites for advanced manufacturing. We did have a tour of the existing facility in Reading. They do meet the, the goals and objectives of Arrow Hub. It's a PUD. So they've started the planning commission process. As far as getting approval for the site itself, we're still working on some details about building elevations. You know, we want this area to be more than just an industrial park. So we are looking for some pretty dynamic exterior building elevations to make it look good. I don't know if, I know you're familiar with the existing Connecticut Vision that opened like two years ago in Arrow Hub. They're in another advanced manufacturing company that's currently there. General Tool will be just to the north of them, along Arrow Hub Boulevard.
This is in Evendale?
It is in Evendale.
Want to make sure. You gotta keep up with you guys, y'all moving quick.
When you're coming up 75 and you see St. Rita, behind that is a lot of vacant land. There's Landmark Church.
Yep.
To the west is vacant land we've been amassing for Arrow Hub. And there is some, to the south of Glendale Millford, that's also part of Arrow Hub. It has the Motor Shop and a few other buildings on there that are currently occupied.
Got you. Thank you.
It'll be, I think, the third or fourth business in Arrow Hub. We're excited.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I believe we've owned the property since the early 90s. We, you've used it as we expanded the business. It's now fully staffed with about, I'd say, 30 people that operate out of there. We did also pursue further development in Woodlawn, and that was not viable option.
I just think it's a great opportunity, a great project. The tax abatement is reasonable for change. We get lots of requests, and I think it's a reasonable ask by you guys. And so I would be in agreement with this. The Arrow Hub that you were talking about, I know there was some negotiation going on with St. Rita to see if they would make some decisions to expand even more. Where are you on that? Are you able to say?
We have had talks with them about the history of St. Rita. Their population is declining. I mean, a lot of public schools are taking on the mission. St. Rita's was previously exclusive, so, but there still is a need. So part of the conversation is creating a new building for them and doing a short-term or a low-cost lease for them. So then we can use the front, yeah. Because you know, their current building is old, it's deteriorating, it's hard to maintain for a school that's, you know, doesn't have the extra money. There's, it's a big maintenance nightmare.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. What's the next steps for this resolution?
The next steps, it'll go to the Commissioners next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yes.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Now, item number four, I'll make a motion to go in executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121. Dot 22G4 to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.